All this meeting of the Asylum Springs Board of Adjustments for Tuesday, August 12th, 2025 to order. Roll call, please.
Kay Williams.
Here.
Renaud.
Present.
Sutton.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
Sally.
Here.
T. Williams.
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First thing on the agenda for this evening is approval of the minutes from the Board of Adjustments regular meeting on July 8th, 2025. Commissioners, everybody received a copy of the minutes. Were there any changes or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Approval of minutes passes. Next up, variance request. Megan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Megan Thomas, current planner. Both the driveway width variance and the building height variance that were scheduled for tonight have been withdrawn by the applicant and will not be up for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. There's nothing we have to do with that, right? They're just...
That is correct. If it was withdrawn by the applicant, it's an applicant... It is a variance that is required to have an applicant. So since there's no applicant attached to it, it does not have to be voted upon.
Perfect. Well, with that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Move to be adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. On to... This meeting of the Asylum Springs Planning Commission for Tuesday, August 12th, 2025. Roll call, please.
Sutton.
Here.
Renaud.
Here.
Kay Williams.
Here.
T. Williams.
Here.
Sally.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. First item on the agenda, approval of the minutes from the meeting in July 8th, 2025. Commissioners, were there any questions or changes for the minutes? If not, I'll accept a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Approval of minutes passes. Moving on to development permit approvals. Number one was to be tabled. Megan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this significant development request has also been withdrawn by the applicant. It will not be up for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. So we can just move on to number two?
That is correct. This has been withdrawn by the applicant, and it's dependent upon an applicant. It is not required to receive a vote.
Thank you. Next up, rezoning development permit, RZ 25-07. Ben?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ben Rhodes, Senior Planner. So what we are looking at is a rezoning request at 103 South Holly Street. The proposal is going from R2, Single Family Residential, to proposed GI Institutional. The applicant is desiring to rezone three lots, six through eight of the Blackwell subdivision. That consists of 1.77 acres and no future land use map amendment is needed with this. Here you do see the future land use map, and we have the neighborhood one highlighted, which represents the yellow shading on the map. And this is the appropriate uses that were brought along with that. As you can see, the school, civic, and recreation are considered very appropriate. So there's no map issues with that. The proposed GI district, because it allows for schools, would be considered appropriate with the future land use map. And here you see the amount provided by the applicant there at the bottom. Again, this is going from R2 to GI. The university did recently acquire the property with the intent to use it for student housing. And I believe that will be in the existing single-family structure, which is the one down to the south there. Additional development of that parcel, if it is possible, but we don't have any plans right now of any plan of any building or anything going on with that. The neighborhood does function primarily as residential and institutional uses, which, as you imagine, when that area is dominated by the university. So it would be consistent with those established uses. Staff finds that the rezoning does meet the minimum requirements of the GI zone and is compliant with the guidance of the future land use map. And we are available for any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Are there any comments or questions from anyone in the audience? If not, commissioners, do you have any comments or questions regarding RZ 25-07? There are no comments. I'll accept a motion.
I move we accept RZ 2507 as proposed, with the conditions as proposed.
Have a motion to accept RZ 2507 as proposed, to move to the board with recommendation for approval? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
T. Williams.
Yes.
Sally.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Sutton.
Yes.
Renaud.
Yes.
Kay Williams.
Yes.
Thank you.
RZ 25-07 will move to the board with recommendation for approval, and will go to the board on September 2nd, 2025. Next up, rezoning development permit, RZ 2508. Mr. Rhodes?
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Ben Rhodes, Senior Planner. We're looking at different rezoning. This is the 400 to 500 block of North Simon Sager Drive. The proposal is going from A1 Agricultural to C2 Roadway Commercial. This is two lots within the K.O. Commercial subdivision, as well as the Reserve subdivision, consisting in lot 22.38 acres. This one does require a future land use map amendment from mixed use to regional commercial. And here you see the map. I have the mixed use center highlighted. That's in that kind of turquoise bluish color there. And because C2 allows for the large format, commercial, the big box stores, that type of thing, that would fit probably better under large offices and shops, as is shown as not appropriate. So we are requesting, or the applicant through the rezoning is requesting, a map amendment that would take this from mixed use to regional commercial, which you see is shown two steps below there on the legend, in that darker red color. So if you look here, this is the two sites here where it took them out. I'm calling it as in the staff report, we had the East Lot and the West Lot. And these are currently requested for sale. There are no specific developments that are planned that we know of at this time. So it's really more just for marketing the properties for potential sale. C2 is considered probably the best fit zoning-wise with the existing regional commercial land uses, particularly to the south. This is just to the north of the Lowe's store, as well as, you know, the Walmart Supercenter. We have also emerging commercial to the south of there alongside Simon Sager. So we're finding that this would be consistent with that. The sites are currently vacant and do have access to Simon Sager, as well as along Talawa Street. The neighborhood primary functions as an emerging commercial corridor that is supportive of regional commercial uses and scaling in the large lots, which are, as you see, these are very large lots are ideally set up for that large-scale development. So it's staff's finding that the rezoning meets the minimum requirements of the C2 zoning. However, we, a future land use map amendment is required to regional commercial uses in the 2040, as shown on 2040 land use map. And staff is supportive of the map amendment, given the existing site conditions and the neighborhood context. And with that, we are available for any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Is there anyone in the audience that has any questions or comments? If not, commissioners, any questions or comments regarding RZ 2508? If not, I'll entertain a motion to move RZ 2508, forward it to the board with recommendation for approval?
Chairman, I move that we approve rezoning development permit, RZ 2508.
Have a second? Move in second. Roll call, please.
Sally.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Sutton.
Yes.
Renaud.
Yes.
Kay Williams.
Yes.
T. Williams.
Yes.
Thank you.
Rezoning development permit, RZ 2508 will go before the board on September 2nd, 2025. Next up, rezoning development permit, RZ 2509. You're not, Megan.
No, I'm not. Thank you. Kyle Belt, Planner One. This is a rezoning request located at the 600 block of North Progress Avenue. The applicant is requesting to rezone tract five of the Lowe's Asylum Springs subdivision, consisting of 6.24 acres from the A1 Agricultural District to C2 Roadway Commercial. We can see the future land use map for the property here, which currently designates this area as mixed use centers and local commercial. The proposed C2 zoning district does not align with the future, with the mixed use designation, as it allows for large offices and shops in which the 2040 comprehensive plan describes as not appropriate. Therefore, a future land use map amendment is recommended to amend the land use designation of the northern portion of the property from mixed use centers to local commercial. It should be noted, the local commercial land use designation currently exists within the neighborhood to the south of this property and is shown all along the west side of North Progress Avenue. Upon staff's review, we can see that the site is currently vacant. We can also see that the neighborhood primarily functions as a commercial and institutional corridor with a variety of land uses existing and emerging that are in line with the proposal. Staff finds that the rezoning meets the minimum lot requirements of C2 zoning and is consistent with the commercial and institutional neighborhood context and character. Additionally, the proposal does not align with the current future land use designation for the property. Therefore, a future land use map amendment is needed. We're available for any questions that you may have.
And Kyle? Anyone in the audience has any questions or comments? If not, commissioners, do you have any questions or comments regarding RZ 2509? If not, I will entertain a motion to recommend approval to the board?
I would move we approve RZ 25-09 and recommend approval by the board.
Second. A motion is second. Roll call, please.
Sutton.
Yes.
Renaud.
Yes.
Kay Williams.
Yes.
T. Williams.
Yes.
Sally.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next up, special use permit, SU 25-03. Ben?
Hello again, Ben Rhodes, Senior Planner. So we are just to the south of the last project on Progress Avenue, 350 North Progress. It's a site that's zone C2. We're considering a special use permit to allow for use unit 24, which is a retail controlled beverage sales within the C2 Zone District. The proposal is to relocate an existing store, which is called the Stock Tank Liquor Store, that's located in, to locate into a new building to the north of its current site. And here you see the proposed location on the left, outlined in the red rectangle there. So the special use request was triggered by the applicant's desire to obtain permission to occupy a building that's currently under construction. You might probably notice that out there just north of the shopping center. And so it's an existing store, as I stated, that's in this shopping center. So they're going to vacate that spot and then relocate essentially in the new building so they can get a permanent location. Because it is a new location within the C2 Zone District, their special use permit is required. It can't just be shifted from where they are now up to the new location. The proposed use does appear to be compatible with surrounding area, include local and regional land uses. New screening for the newer building is proposed on the west side of the lot to protect views from the existing single-family home to the site itself. Staff finds that the special use permit as presented does meet the minimum city requirements and is consistent with the surrounding existing commercial uses within the neighborhood. And with that, we are available for any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Is there any questions or comments from anyone in the audience? If not, commissioners, any questions or comments regarding special use permit, SU 2503? You guys are making this easy. I'll accept a motion to forward special use permit, SU 2503, to the board with recommendation for approval?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve special use permit, SU 2503.
Move in second. Ed, roll call, please.
McKinney.
Yes.
Sutton.
Yes.
Renaud.
Yes.
Kay Williams.
Yes.
T. Williams.
Yes.
Sally.
Yes.
Thank you.
Special use permit, SU 2503 will go before the board, August 5th, 2025. Next up, easement acceptances. Megan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we're accepting four easements tonight. It was four minor amendment plots that we had, and then one by separate instrument. That's the fourth one on the list here. So I'll just run through them. We have 3902 Short Lane. That's the survey on the left side of the screen. And then the 1,000 block to the 1,100 block of East Harvard Street. We have some easements there. Moving on, we have Lincoln and Brashear's Road, which was a minor subdivision where you're accepting easements on that. And then the Waukesha Road is the separate instrument that we have coming through for acceptance. Let me know if you guys have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Any comments from anyone in the audience? Commissioners, any comments or questions? I'll accept a motion to accept easements as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Giving somebody a chance.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Pardon me, was the second by Sutton, by Renaud. Thank you. Renaud.
Yes.
Kay Williams.
Yes.
T. Williams.
Yes.
Sally.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
And Sutton.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next up, board and staff approval permits.
Okay, so we're just running through what's on the September 2nd Board of Directors agenda. So we have an annexation coming, and that's the first reading of that annexation request. It's over there on Highway 59. It's three parcels that are being annexed. We also have a drainage easement vacate that's at 1113 East Ashley. That's also on its first reading on September 2nd. So, and then just a couple of staff announcements. The August PDRC, that's our Plan Development Review Committee, has been canceled for today because we didn't receive any plan development submittals. And we also have canceled Board of Adjustment for September 9th because we didn't receive any variance submittals this month. And then any update on the UDC? Well, good, Ben.
Yes, so Unified Development Code is quickly drawing to an end of its review process. So the Planning Commission meeting in September, as of right now, is still planned for your review, the Planning Commission's review of the Unified Development Code. So just be prepared for a very lengthy packet. The redaction alone is over 200 pages, and then the code itself will be about 150. And then the guide is about 50 pages with that. So don't be intimidated by that. We're here to answer any of your questions. And it is available now to review. So if you go to the city's webpage, we have version 3.3 that was just posted last Friday. That includes a lot of the changes from the stakeholder meetings, as well as meetings with elected officials and such. So we've included those into the version 3.3. And we are waiting for one last piece of information for our engineering division handling street cross-sections and some other tidbits and such that need to be updated in the engineering side. That will be in version 3.4, which I'm hoping to get posted by the end of this week. And then hopefully that will be the final version that gets to the Planning Commission for next month, which will be version 4.0. I'll just update to that version for the Planning Commission. We are still accepting public comments. So if there is anyone that still has comments, we are accepting those through the end of the day on Friday, August the 22nd, by 5:00 PM. So that will be the absolute cutoff. I mean, we have to, at some point where we have to say this is going to be it, what we're going to be looking at. But yeah, that will be the cutoff. And then, of course, after the Planning Commission, it will go to the City Board of Directors per our usual process, like a rezoning request, that type of thing. But anyway, that's the update of where we are with Unified Development Code.
Mr. Chair? I just wanted to add on that. The reason why we extended the public input for the UDC until the 22nd was we have some updates coming, and I plan on sending those out as soon as I receive them. I may have already received an email for those, I'm not sure, of our typical street sections. Our typical street sections, I asked those to go back to the drawing board so there's a little bit more clarity and higher quality individual product that can go out for each one of those. So each one of our typical street sections has been redone by our contract city engineer. And last time I checked, they were making some final tweaks to those after a meeting that we had. But the general idea is to be able to take one of the typical street sections and have everything that you need to know on one sheet that can be printed out and take with you. So we have one of those being made for each of the street classifications and the alley. And I'm going to go ahead and finish the announcements, if that's okay, Mr. Chair. So we also have a meeting time change, 5:30 PM, starting September the 9th, 2025. The minutes for the workshop from the July 29th, 2025, that joint workshop meeting, those will come here for review on September 9th, 2025. But the Planning Commission, since it's a joint workshop, the Planning Commission will not approve those. You will make a recommendation for approval to the board. And I do have two other announcements that were not part of the agenda. First of all, I just wanted to take a moment to introduce Kyle Belt, Planner One. He did do his first presentation tonight, but he has requested to do a quick introduction, if that's okay with the chair.
Thank you, Chris. Well, my name is Kyle Belt, and I come from the city of Rogers in terms of work. I am a lifelong Fayetteville resident. I was attracted to the city of Asylum Springs because I wanted to do something different and get out of the way and out of the corridor on I-49. And one of the other things that I joke about with people, but I am a little bit serious, is that the commute was becoming so awful. And it's such a prettier drive, there had to be somewhere better to go to. But I've actually known Chris for several years through work, and I saw a planner position open up here, applied for it. We did not, you know, discuss anything or anything like that. And I was able to interview, and lo and behold, I ended up securing the position. And I'm very, very happy to be coming from where I'm coming from in the aspect of, I was working as the planning administrator there. So I was kind of on the other side of things, taking in high-level applications. I led a, you know, small staff, you know, and then we would disseminate projects out for reviews. However, I started out as a planner, and I would like to very much get back into that. And I see so much growth, potential here. And when I say growth, I don't just mean, you know, sprawl and, you know, terrible, you know, negative things. I mean all of the good things. This is a beautiful place to be at. And it's just, every time I drive through here, there's something new going on, and it impresses me every time. So I really don't have words yet, other than, you know, in the short time that I've been here, I have never worked in a place that's disorganized and has such a great family environment, and I've never felt so welcome. So thank you very much, and I look forward to serving.
Mr. Chair? I had one final announcement, so you're not going to want to hear this one. We have received information from Megan Thomas, our current planner, that she has accepted a position as the county planning manager, and she will be leaving us on September the 5th, which is prior to the next Planning Commission meeting. So
Denied.
Megan has also asked for an opportunity to say a couple of things, since this is her last meeting.
I just wanted to thank you guys for all the relationships that I built here, you know, the community that we've had here. It's really helped me grow my career, and I'm very thankful for everything that I've learned. And I hope that you guys will stay in touch, you know? Maybe someone come to the planning board there so that I can see some friendly faces, you know? But I am honestly just so grateful for Asylum, and I will miss y'all very much. But I won't be too far away. I'll be in Bentonville. So you can always call me if you have any questions about county planning. But yes.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say we just appreciated all your help and all the work you've put into the unified code development plan and everything, and we're going to miss you here.
Yes, welcome, Kyle. We're glad to have you. Megan, we'll miss you. Any other announcements?
No, sir.
I will mention, tonight, you may notice we're short one commissioner. Wayne Thomas moved out of the city limits, and as part of our code, you can't be on the commission and not live in the city limits. So we appreciate the time he spent with us, and there is a position open. I guess they could call you?
That is correct, except for the "call me" part. And we do have a vacant position open. However, that's not filled by new applicants. That will be first through existing applicants from the prior applicant pool, through the city administrator's office. If that fails, then we would probably move to a different process, but we'd have to identify that separately in the code. The Planning Commission also will be posting, we will be posting vacancies sometime soon for the other positions that will be ending terms or term renewals.
Thank you, Chris. Are there any comments or anything from the rest of commissioners? If not, I will If not, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.